Welcome to the Yarn Chicks Podcast! Old boy from Edinburgh! So excited! My name is Mimi, I am the host of Yarn Chicks Podcast and I usually record in Berlin, but I've made it to Edinburgh, yes! Because I wanted to go to the yarn festival so bad, I finally decided to get that ticket, get on that plane. So now I'm here and I have the chance to record in this lovely living room, which is really generous of my host here. So if you want to see what I've been up to, you can also check my pictures on Instagram. I'm @leekwed there, so I'm gonna put the information around here. I'm @leekwed on Instagram and also on Ravelry, you can see most of my projects there. I'm gonna try and update that, I'm a bit delayed. And yeah, so today I wanted to talk about all the projects that I had completed in a run-up to Edinburgh on the plane at the K. So I've been really busy because I gave myself like a little personal countdown to complete some things, because I wanted to show them off or show to people. So I'm gonna talk a lot about that, but also about the amazing meet-ups I had and yeah, just the general happiness of the yarn fest. So thank you for putting this on, it's been amazing and a bit buzzing and a bit busy, but in a way, I guess, that's why we come out here for, to go and be sort of... Yeah, get all this excitement information, meet people and see lots and buy lots of gorgeous yarn. I'm gonna share about my FOs, like I said, about my whips and also about my acquisitions. Yeah, so I'm gonna go straight in. Oh, I'm wearing my mini penguin, which is actually my daughter's. I made it from my daughter and it fits me as well. And I'm gonna use scraps to knit it. But the only sort of special yarns that I bought were for the sleeves. And yeah, I quite love... Sleeves are different, mild, dispicled. And yeah, so maybe yesterday at the K, you might have seen me wearing this, if you came to the K, which is like a dance party, where basically everybody dances in a group. So you're always changing partners and it's quite an active and vibrant and... Yeah, you just meet everyone because you're dancing with everyone and it's quite... It's so much fun. I had so much fun. I think I danced three or four different dances. I was super out of breath in the end. Yeah, it was, but it was lots and lots of fun. So maybe you might have seen me in my penguin. FOs. I had obviously the FO of last week. That's maybe also how people might recognize me, because I was wearing the pussy hat quite a lot. I thought it was really important to show it and show... Actually, it worked so well as a connection point, talking to people. I met lots of people who also were wearing their pussy hats or knitting pussy hats. And I think, yeah, that was the best thing of bringing it and wearing it, because it was like a conversation maker and also like sort of showed we were all connected. And conversations, I could, communication's good. And even people might not have recognized it. It definitely made people happy to see the cat ears. I'm gonna put the details just here or in the show notes, which you can find on my Yarn Chicks Podcast Ravelry group, because I think I've spoken about it in the last episode. Or just go back to the last episode. And visit me there and I'll explain all about the pattern, and the yarn and things. But the amazing thing is that this pattern is by Anna Malz, who I was so lucky to meet on the knit night. So on the first night I got here, I went to the big knit night at a... I think it was like a Scaminavian bar, it was called Aqua. And yeah, we were all sort of just hanging out and just meeting Anna was like, "It had been a long time coming", right? And it was, yeah, it was amazing because we were just sort of hanging out and chatting, knitting a bit and in and out of conversation, because obviously there were so many people there. But in a way, it was like a really great way to sort of pick up where you... Sort of on social media, you sort of meet and greet and talk and have a conversation, but to sort of have that in real life and yeah, pick up the thread and be connected. And yeah, that was, that was really, a really nice night. So I got to meet, also I got to meet Lika, finally! Because we'd arranged to meet a couple of times before as well. And it's always like when you finally reach that point of, "Here we are, we're sitting together, we're knitting together." Yeah, that was really lovely, Lika. And the heck's fun, don't tell, oh! The heck's fun, don't tell, so... Hannah Girl, thank you! You just sort of said, "Hi, I know you!" And then I recognized you a bit later, but it was just like cute, Europe. It was so good to meet and that, I got to hang out with all of you, that was brilliant. I am so happy that this place exists, where you can go and connect with people from all over Europe, all over the world. Yeah, and it's gonna carry on today, I think. So, sorry, that was the pussy hat I'm gonna chitchat in. And, oh, my main FO for Edinburgh were these mittens. And I knitted them together with, in a little mini cowl, within the blacker pod cowl, with Fran. Oh, I love Fran, I can't believe she gave me the yarn as a present. And this is a Blacker breed, limited edition. There are the woodland tail mitts. And it's a pattern by Bee Mandarins, so Melody Hoffmann. Thank you for this amazing pattern. Oh, look, you can see the detail on the here and the wrist there, with my still, my tag for the festival. I just absolutely adore. The pattern is meant to be like bush and leaf, blueberry drop, I think. It definitely looks like that. And it's really good, feminine design in this really strong, very... Yeah, it's not, it's not actually tough and I've blocked it, so it's even softened up. But it's a very great, strong, um... Strong yarn and I just think the connection's brilliant. Thank you Fran, good idea! And we were like communicating about it, but a lot of the suggestions came from Fran and I'm really happy I have these. And obviously, I didn't come on my own, because I couldn't bring Fran over. She just couldn't come. And we also are meant to meet, I think we will meet very soon, right? And instead of her, I brought along her teddy. Well, she made this and gave it to me and it's the most beautiful little creature. She is called Ginger, my daughter already named her Ginger McGee. Ginger McGee. And she's wearing this lovely knitted dress with a tiny button at the back, which has brought us so much joy. She always gets undressed for bedtime and dressed again in the morning. And I'm really happy she came along with me, because I would have felt a bit lonely maybe sometimes. So I had this little companion with... Oh, and Fran also spins her own yarn, she's a great, great, great spinner. And she madda died and spun this little bit of yarn, which is now her little bow on the head. It's lovely, isn't it? Ginger! So you can find her stuff under Spin Drift Bears. And she is Spin Drift, so you can find Fran on two accounts. But I really suggest you go and check out her teddy, they're super, super lovely. And yeah, I'm happy I didn't travel on my own. And she's gonna sit on the mittens, because they're sort of her sleeping bag. But they're still mittens, two sleeping bags. So hmm, someone wanted to join the party. And freshly hatched, we have a little penguin. Look, I'm unetched! Actually, the beak came about at the K. Well, that was all I knitted yesterday, this beak. Bought some tiny, tiny higher, higher shorts at the marketplace. And well, hooray! It was a lot of fiddly, fiddly food to get that beak done. And it's still not completely stitched on, you might not see it, but... It's not like a complete FO yet, but a naked little penguin, ready for my daughter's birthday and especially happy to have a beaks this. And they're just hanging out, they slept both in the mid niche last night. And I just loved making the penguin. This is a pattern by the Sweater Spatter, so Anna Malz. And in, you can find it in her book Penguin in Knit Collection. It is most definitely the funnest little creature to knit. I have not made its actual suit, so that's... And I won't finish that for my daughter's birthday. Hatched in Edinburgh, that's very special to me. And has a little, a beaks this to look after them. So that is my hatchling, penguin! And that was the FO. Actually, I think I only reposted it when I was in here. So the very last thing in the list. And the second to last thing was this little vest. And I just saw, I still haven't finished completely. Oh, sorry. Weaving all the ends, and there are lots of ends always to weave. Look at this amazing yarn in this amazing popcorn pattern. Woo, you will meet it again in another shape! I'll tell you more about that in a minute. This yarn is by The Wool Kitchen, that, well, namely Helen. And I am so super happy. Hers was the first stall I actually went to and the first purchase I made was at your stall, wasn't it Helen? So happy and really happy how this turned out with the popcorns. And it was the most fun to knit, most, most fun. The pattern is the Popcorn Vest by Misha and Puff, Studio Misha and Puff. Check it out, I'll put the details down here in the show notes, so you can check out this pattern. Only thing missing is the I-Cord ties, so I might take it out on the plane or I might just do that, because that's also gonna be a present on Monday for my daughter, who obviously has seen me knit it and loves this lush, soft yarn. I do as well, so she'll be very happy that it's finished. She'll always, "Mum, have you finished?" And I'm always like, "Oh, careful the stitches, not yet, not yet finished." But now I am! And the very lucky thing about this connection with the yarn and that is that also, you know, I went to her stall and bought it, but we'd also been arranging to meet already several times. So finally, we got to hang out and meet in the flesh. And I really loved that Helen, because yeah, we're gonna see each other soon again, I know that. Because it was absolutely fun and also very generous of you to introduce me to your friends. I don't know, it was just like a nice, chatty evening. And I guess, end of a very, very busy day for quite a lot of very talented... Well, everyone must have had a very tiring day, but it was really nice to just hang and have that... In Germany, we say "Feier am Bier", like the beer that seals the deal, like gives the end of the day. And just sort of, I don't know, sit and chat for a bit and wind down the wind down beer. And that was nice to catch that together with you Helen. Okay, so my next FO is an almost FO and it's still sitting in this lovely fringe field bag, which my friends gave me that I'm in Edinburgh with. Yeah, we're on the same plane and just sort of milling around together. You know, some people had course, classes booked. Courses, I said, but classes booked, I didn't. And yeah, so that was Yvonne, who's Papie. And there's the Woolknob, Delina and Hannah Lisa, who are both together making stories and are obviously very busy promoting their book Woods, which I'm so excited it's gonna come out. And I think I showed their, well, my last knit reportage was actually showing you their campaign video, which I shot with my husband. My husband is a videographer and I got to help on the job. And I think it was a really great day, because those girls, they're strong. They've got work ethic, I tell you. Because it was cold and we were obviously filming them and they're knitwear. And yeah, generally amazed how strong and positive and cheerful you remained through that. And I think it shows. The spirit is, the things we love make us happy in life, in work. So and they, the three of them, together with Yvonne, gave me this bag for my birthday, which I've been mega excited to use. And then on knit night, oh, can you see here, this amazing badge? It's a pin, it's a little pin, and it reads "Cat hair, don't care", which is very soothing today, because my hair is cat hair. Just sort of jumped in the shower now, so it's sort of gone a bit funny. Cat hair, don't care. Lika, that was the best present, because she had this badge on her bag. And she said, "I just got this" and I was like, "Oh, I love that." And she just went, "I've got another hat." Ah, that was so, super generous and it'll forever and ever and ever remind me of this amazing whirlwind of a weekend. So it had to move on to the bag. First badge! So inside, sorry, that was a big fringe field bag detour, the usual, like... Sorry about that. So in it is my sort of FO, almost FO project. And it's the design I came up myself. As you can tell, this one has already got the hand on it and this one has just got a pin. But it will grow a hand out of it. I was, you know, not good in controlling the amount of things I wanted to do, I'm able to do in life. So I brought it along, thinking I could finish before our podcast. But in a way, like this, at least I can show you how this comes about. Because look, the mitten, the ribbing, the brim of the mitten is actually different inside to outside. And then the hand grows out from the inside. And the idea came about, I'm gonna just put on the one to show you. So the hand design's on the inside of the mitten. And the idea came about during the Layside Mit Cowl. Maybe it might be Layside Mits Cowl or Mittens. I'm gonna definitely put the hashtag down here, because it is a beauty of a hashtag for makers. And Lay, thank you so, so much. Your sparking point of "Find an artist that inspires you, make a pair of mittens inspired by this person", idea is genius. It's absolutely, it was honestly, I've got, oh, the hairs on my back are setting up! Got goose pimples. Because it was such a lovely way to start the process of making something and really making it your own. And I happened to be during the time of, the cowl had already begun and I was sort of like dipping in and out of a nosey and I hadn't chosen anyone. But I went to the Pina Bausch exhibition, it was like a retrospective in Berlin at the Copius Bau. And it was really touching, because of all the video materials that you would normally never get to see, that was available to one's eyes. And I met this woman in a different, with a different angle. Pina Bausch is a German dance performance. I have a second side to myself, which is Dance Analysis. I study dance, studies and write about artists and dancers and projects. But it's sort of like a mix of critique, review, historic research. And Pina Bausch has been on my table, on my desk for quite a while. She's not climbing off and I'm happy she isn't, because her work is very inspiring. If you get a chance, check out, even if you want the entry point, check out the movie called Pina Dance, it's a great entry point. And I managed to go to this exhibition and see her rehearse for what must be one of my favorite, if not the favorite, Pina Bausch piece, which is Cafe Muller. She dances, sort of holding her hands out in front of her. And it's a sort of, it's a solo that she always dances part of the piece, which is also very seldom amongst choreographers. And it was a later work and her body and gesture and strength, it's just amazing. And it was about this, you know, this gesture of putting the hands out. It sort of feels like it's an offer for a touch, it's an opening up of. So I wanted to somehow bring her, you know, have that touch. And so I think that's why the touch goes in, because touches, the connection is a... You know, it's somewhere there and there as well. So it sort of grows out and when I cycle, I can swap them around, so that the angora on the inside doesn't get... Which also looks quite funny. The yarn is Tulliver yarn. And at midnight, I met Elke! She's also from Berlin, she's a natural dyer and she helped me lighten... I mean, it was amazing, it was a dream, how we came about with this color for me. And it was just two skeins and I ordered them both, so I still got one at home, because I made these quite a bit smaller than I originally set out to make them. And yeah, it's a gorgeous, strong yarn. So it's a Blueface Leicester yarn and it's an amazing petrol color, this dye. I didn't bring the skein along, because bringing yarn to a yarn festival seems a bit silly. Almost had a whole bag of yarn to show you in the podcast. But yeah, and I mixed it with yarn that I bought of Yvonne at her destash. She had like a little destash sale and it's a Pickles Oslo angora. Yvonne, that was amazing. That's how we met, basically, I bought something in her declutter stash. I don't know, you know, when you sort of go through a yarn and you can, you then offer it up on Instagram, so people can have it. So that was really great, Yvonne, to have that. And I, so I love this connection of the two women I met and, you know, that I know now, because I also met Elke. So and another great thing about this, I'm writing down the pattern for this, for the scene at the moment. And maybe that's a bit of a great sneak peek. But I just thought, and it's gonna be called "Your Hand in Mine", because I think anyone could want, have a longing to have someone's hand in theirs. It might be that maybe your children are growing way too fast and you wanna capture the size of the hand as it is and keep it in your hand sometimes. Or it might be an artist, it might be someone you miss. And so, sort of the idea of how to come about with like a little knit chart to make this and how to achieve this funky inner brim. Yeah, and I hope you're gonna be excited to find out more about that. And maybe some people will actually pick up and do something that I, in a way, came up with, inspired by amazing Lay's project and the most amazing Pina Bausch. Yeah, the "Your Hand in Mine" mittens are coming to you very soon! So that was that. And the next, oh my god, I have to have a sip of tea. Edinburgh! And now I will show you my FOs. No, not FOs! I'll show you my... It's time to carry on. These are the whips. And this was a VIP whip up until Thursday night. I was knitting it at the knit night and some people might have seen it. I think they even took the pattern down, I had some people inquire, so at least I did that. Because I did not finish it for the Color and Lines Cowl, sadly. Ella, I'm really sorry, but it just sort of, it sort of snuck to the back. And then, in a way, I feel like every circle I have to sort of make and take my time and focus and not sort of rush through it, because I would have rushed through it with probably knitting through long nights last week. And it sort of worked out to sadly drop out of my to-do list before Edinburgh. But in a way, it's good, because this is a really great project, because it's not so huge. You can sit in my bag and I can pick it out. I have the little chart to follow this amazing pattern called Fen Infinity scarf. And it's by Ella Austin, who is bomellaella on Instagram and I think Ella Austin on Ravelry. Go and find it, I absolutely love knitting it. I've used a mix of yarns, so there's Hey Mama Wolf, mini skeins, like this green beginning, the green here and the pink. There is Tulliver yarn, because Elke had given me some end bits here, so I've combined two and knitted this little shape, which is like a moon shape. And then this purple was a scrap share, someone like Viveka knit pearl. Hooray! All the way from Norway, I think she lives in Oslo, I have to find out actually. She sent me this purple yarn, it was a great selection of scraps. And the blue actually as well. And I just sort of love the colors together. Hey Mama Wolf, dye is naturally plant dyed and so does Tulliver yarn, it's also plant dyed. I don't know about this, but for me, it looks very much plant dyed as well. It's a gray yarn base. And I would say it was dyed... Ah, god, what the... It was dyed with plant dye. And yeah, and so I'm continuing working, continuing to work on this. And I think I will potentially also use some of the... I still have some yarn left of the mittens, so I might add in a brown circle after the blue to add in some blacker yarn. And I might do that today, so that I have this memory of knitting that, finishing up that last little bit. And so that is what's currently in my project bag. And then there is one more whip that I took, because of being in my amazing project bag by Kataryn May. Oh, it came to Edinburgh with me, I told you! I'm so happy, thank you so much for this. And it was a surprise present through the Secret Valentines project. Please check out the hashtag #AmazingThingsMadeForOtherAmazingPeople, little surprises. And inside this bag, since I got this bag, I've had the Find Your Fade shawl. I'm knitting and it's just, I'm on Garter loving, which is really great, because it means I can do it whilst I talk to people and I won't get too confused. And I got it out yesterday to knit and realized, yeah, that is actually the best, because I don't get so confused. I had to finish the beak and things before, but did a couple of rows on this yesterday and we'll do some more later on, definitely on the plane. Look, my Find Your Fade! This shawl is a pattern by Andrea Nits, Andrea Maori. And she is hosting the Find Your Fade cowl, which is open for join, to join up. And I thought, actually Edinburgh is the best place. If I hadn't, I've already decided I've got my yarns or still, you know, you sort of fading stuff later on. But Edinburgh yarn festival. But, um, Edinburgh Yarn Fest is the best place to just sort of pick up skeins and work out a fade, actually, because they have so many amazing yarns. I'm using something I dyed myself, my mother-loving dye. Oh, god, I love mother. Um, it's, uh, from a plant dye kit by Hey Mama Wolfia and Sjule. Clever woman, sharing out her plant dye skills, and I managed to have this little fade with my mini skeins. I basically created this fade, and so I've got quite a few ends to even, I'm really sorry about that, it's a bit messy. And now I'm knitting a yarn by Houseback Lagina called Vanilla Cupcake, and I love that the speckles are happening. And I will continue, and that is still in my fringe, I'm gonna show it quickly, sorry. The, with the, so I'm gonna quickly show you the, what's gonna come next in the fade. It's this yellow, also from a plant dye kit, and this was welt, so in German it's bau, welt. And I, uh, dyed that on New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, completed the task. So it's sort of, it's a very special skein to me, and I love the sort of little change in colors. Used it for the beak of our penguin, so I used it for the first time yesterday, skinned it up on the sofa. To net it up. And so happy about having this also for the fade. So I should put it in the fade bag, actually, now. And the Find Your Fade, that design. I'm gonna join the cal with this skein by Hallo Wolle, Alyssa. Ooh, hi, girl. This is a friend from, and, uh, dye, indie dyer from Zurich in Switzerland. And we had a great discussion about the plum area of my fade, and she dyed me up a storm. One of them being actually on her new base, so I thought, I better get going on this, because it's a test knit of her new base, which is a non-superwash, and it's a merino wool in a fingering weight. And, uh, the colorway is called Pair to Plum, for Mimi. And I am gonna knit a cow with it, because I think it's just enough length for a lovely little cow, um, designed to be decided. But yeah, so I wanted to quickly show that, because I couldn't show you the next fade color. I thought, because this has been basically detoured out of the Find Your Fade into the Oneskin Cal. Check it out on Gregoria Fibers, um, Ravelry feed. And yeah, join maybe with the Oneskin, Edinburgh Oneskin Club. Yeah, why not? Come and join. I'm gonna join when I get back, and the label's amazing, Alyssa is also illustrator on the label. I absolutely love that. Basically, I don't know if you can see it, I can't see if it's visible, um, like knitting needles and the Hallo Wolle is written in amongst all the stitches. So that's there. Hope you can see that. And so actually, I should be going into acquisitions, and this is my acquisitions bag. Viola. Emily can't be here. I got this bag a while ago, and it's the Viola Yarns, Viola meets Moorsburg tote. And I just used it for my shopping. This is how much I bought, basically. And had to, because I wanted to see her as well, but I got to meet someone per yarn. And that was lovely already, and I just sort of loved carrying this bag around. And in it, all my Edinburgh Yarn Fest treasures. Oh, I hope you're ready, because this is like acquisition excitement time. So like I said, the first thing I bought, first thing I did was go to the Wool Kitchen stand, and I bought all their worlds of this amazing, I don't know if you can see, basically, more Champagne Supernova in the iron weight. And that's that. I found out from Helen, so the same as this. And I didn't buy just one skein, I bought one, two, three, and number four. Oh no, that's not it. And number four. I've basically bought almost a sweater quantity of this iron weight Champagne Supernova. It's definitely my thing. Honestly, I love this yarn. When I finished the last stitches of this, so now you can see, this is what it looks like in a skein, this is what it looks like knit up. When I was finishing this, the last stitches, I was upset, I was going, I'm sad. I was, I was starting to miss knitting this yarn as I was finishing up. And I think such an emotional reaction to a make means, well, it means I wanted more. So I was the luckiest and happiest woman. Well, there was a lot of happy women yesterday at the yarn fest, you might be one of them. But I was so happy to know that Helen had these, and I could buy them all and have them, and not, yeah, not miss out on knitting this again. So I can't wait. I bought this knowing that it wasn't ju, it wasn't, it wasn't a whole sweater quantity. And the skein that just popped in by mistake, but it needs to come in here, is the skein. So I've bought another skein to go with it, to make the sleeves in a different color. And it was a long process, it's a different weight, actually, but I'm gonna just knit it on different needles. Um, so this is by The Little Gray Sheep. And it's the British Stein Fine Wool Four ply. And there was a lot of to and fro, I was gonna maybe buy the DK, ended up buying the four ply to double it up, but might go back today to get the DK as well. Anyway, this is the utterly buttery colorway. Obviously, you can tell it's utterly buttery yellow goodness. And I bought it off their store, I think Emma is the owner of the store. We had a chat, and, um, the most amazing thing happened. A little butterfly in the corner exchange just flew up and around her little sign and her yarn. And I filmed it, and I've got it, and it's there forever. And I'm gonna probably add it on as a little bit of an outtake, but of a special moment when I bought this, that I got to see a butterfly in, oh, poor butterfly. But hopefully it just flew out. Solène, do you remember? I was with Solène, who, uh, is one of the designers for the Making Stories Witsburg. Actually, we're both just looking at each other, and it was, we were, I think we were both amused, but also like, this is sort of so mad. But yeah, so it's cool on camera, and it's on my mobile phone camera, so it's not high quality. I'm gonna share it as an outtake, so stay tuned for that. And I think Emma was very excited that I got to catch that, so maybe she'll come have a look at it too. So she is The Little Gray Sheep, also on Instagram. And so the Wool Kitchen, uh, yarn will sort of join up with this, and I will have, uh, my own. I'm making myself a sweater. And, oh, now it's getting a bit crowded on the side. My shrine, it's a mobile shrine at the moment. The pattern, I also managed to score off, oh god, I've gotta read her name off of here, I'm really sorry. Karin Weststrand. So the Weststrand sisters are both designers from, um, Sweden. And the sweater I bought of her, and I'm sorry, I almost destroyed it in my bag yesterday. Anyway, I wanted to show you like this. It's the Renfanna. So I'm gonna knit the Renfanna, sorry. I'm gonna knit the Renfanna pattern in those two yarns, because as you can tell here, the sleeve is a separate part and just added on later on. And can you see, oh god, but, but, um, it's got tiny little bubbles, not this divine disease. But so it's gonna be like a mother-daughter look, and also gonna have a little popcorn sweater. So that was the biggest purchase, really, of the day. And then I bought some sock yarn, which is a Fall's Gold by Hedgehog Fiber. It's been looked at and looked at and looked at so many times. And then, um, the fade that, um, Andrea Maori knit for herself, passed this in, and it just looks amazing knit up. I might make a pair of socks. Now I've got the higher, higher mini. Oh god, I don't know where they are, so I can't show them off. The mini higher, higher, maybe, I don't know, get into it. My soccer alarm is definitely turning golden, like a fool. Sorry. So I bought this, and I'm very happy I managed to score this, because I think it was quite a seller yesterday. Maybe there's more today, but it looked like it was going quick and a lot, but not least, a skein by the Skein Queen. And just look at that lush blue turquoise, with blue and brown and purple spots. It's like a speckle goldness goodness, speckle goodness. It's called wriggle, it's very wriggly. It's a one ply, and I bought it especially for a project, which I will introduce on my next podcast, because I've been wobbling. And just absolutely love it, and it's the perfect speckle. That was actually on the hand for a speckle in these colors. And it was a very nice last, last purchase of the day. Uh, it was sixteen pounds, which I think is, well, it's a treasure. So that was the last purchase of the day. And last entry to the yarn shrine, I think it's quite interesting, all the colors, so I could just, my yarn hugging. It'll look like this. Mobile shrine. This is my yarn acquisition collection. I'm very happy, very happy. And I'm gonna wrap it up with two purchases I made for my daughter to join my bit of present giving with a pingle, pingle win. Because as soon as I come back, I have to hit the ground running, basically, there's a kid's birthday party, she's gonna have this, she's gonna have the popcorn. So we're going, you can see the color scheme starting, and I bought an amazing bag. So I, I will put it all in there now. And the bag is by Emilia Jensen, who I also had a chance to meet through Anna, um, on the knit night. And that was really lovely, because I love her bags, I've been eyeing them up, so obviously I went and bought this tiny one. There's a present for my daughter. And it's absolutely perfect. So she's got big toads as well, so I'm tempted to go back for more. Emilia Jensen, check out her shop, she's probably got an Etsy shop, I'm gonna put the details here. And last, but not least, before I go, I bought a rainbow ball to go with the presents for my daughter and with the vest, and maybe the penguin can sit in it or wear it as a hat. So, and that was, oh god, I forgot the name. I haven't got it here, so I'm gonna just put down the names in writing as well, as I do. I often put it in the subtitles, so I hope you just turn on subtitles to see all those details. Or comment with it in the show notes, I'm gonna upload them first thing, because they're all these special things. Bought. And with that, and a heartfelt thank you for coming and listening to me and visiting me on my Edinburgh podcast lounge. I will now say goodbye and see you soon. So that's it. All my yarn, all my purchases, thank you for coming. I'm Liquid on Instagram, so you can see and visit all of this again. Ha, ah, just sorry, cat hair, don't care. Um, and I'm also Liquid on Ravelry, and you will be able to find my Ravelry group there through my projects, I guess also, and, um, and the show notes will be there. I am off now to go back to meet the Woolen Flower today. I was very excited to have a quick chat, but we were gonna chat more, and I'm gonna meet Knit British Louise. And, um, who else is on the list, and I'm saying goodbye to those people I have already met. I'm gonna go and see Kettle Yarns, and hopefully I'm gonna meet up with all my friends again. And I hope I've seen you in Edinburgh, then, oh, it was lovely, wasn't it? Bye-bye.